Commission meeting, we'll start with a roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair Lane.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec.
Yes.
Commissioner Conce is not here.
All right, all right, so then with the next item on the agenda is public comments. And what we do with this item is we take comments for people who would like to talk about something that's not on the agenda. Sometimes it brings up a new issue, sometimes it gives feedback on a previous issue, or sometimes people just want to get something in front of the planning commission or a comment. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section. And I don't see anybody racing up here. We have a standing out standing room, a audience of one in in the room. Yeah, there you go. He's officially standing now. Is anybody else? And nobody's waving or indicating that they're interested in speaking? So I'll go ahead and close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for the public hearing. And we have a couple of items on the, first of all, let me, don't we have?
Three minutes.
Yeah, I know, I don't see it on the agenda.
Get renominated in.
Yeah. Supposed to be minutes, so we're going to go ahead with minutes. Let's, let's review the draft, the minutes. It's not on the agenda, but it should be. It's on the, at least a printed copy I have.
I have, it's on the electronic one. I, I moved that we approve them.
All right, there's move. I didn't see anything in it. Moved the seconded, although, roll call, please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then item number, number three A is the review of the draft housing element. Let me, let me go ahead and go over the procedures on all of our items and then we'll. But I had the wrong agenda, did I have the wrong agenda? I had the wrong.
Sounds like that perhaps might be good.
That's, that's what it was. I had, I brought both of them with me. That's what it is. I can only go like, that's not right. There we go. I was, I was worried. Yeah, I had, I had tomorrow's, I had tomorrow's agenda too.
We can talk to, we could talk to the council and find out if they want to read.
All right, let's go with the public hearing section and what, this will work the same way on all the items. What we'll do is we'll start with an overview from staff and updating the commission on the item. Then we'll bring it, then we'll open up the public comment section. We'll start with the applicant or their representative. And then we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. We'll do that on every item. If anyone pops on the screen later on, I'll probably, I'll be updating them so they know the procedure. With that, item four A is a heritage tree removal permit on tree protection zone. Exception for fifty Tallwood Court in Atherton with, and we'll go ahead and start with a staff overview.
Thank you. So the applicant for fifty Tallwood has requested that this item be continued to the planning commission meeting date uncertain as they make revisions to their development scheme.
All right, good. So then they don't have any, they don't have, still don't have a date that they want to move to?
No, so if the commission does approve a continuation to a date uncertain, a new public notice would be mailed out to all property owners within five hundred feet of the confirmed future planning commission meeting date.
And they're moving ahead on the process and everything, or they're just?
To my understanding, yes, but I would not be able to guarantee that until they resubmit plans.
All right, all right, so this is a method, the, the approach on this is to make sure they don't get charged again, but also I don't want to continue this. This is, is this the second or third time that we've done this one on this one, or is this?
This is the first time of a request for continuance for this application at this address.
All right, good. Well, then let's, I'm, I, I'll move that we continue the item to a date uncertain.
Second.
Moved and I'll give it to Perry, Perry the second. All right. Go ahead and roll call, please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
And Commissioner Narnsec.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item, item number four B is the school master plan update. Fifty Valparaiso, Atherton, it's Sacred Heart School, and you're online. Okay, there you are. All right, I'll go ahead and go, just a, just a second, we'll go ahead with the staff, staff overview.
Thank you, Chair Lane. I'll keep it brief. And in summary format, as detailed staff report has been prepared for commission's review as well as for the public. So tonight you're being asked to consider the two thousand and twenty-two master plan update for Sacred Heart Schools as is presented to the planning commission annually as required by the municipal code. So the school has prepared their two thousand and twenty-two master plan update, which was included as an attachment to the staff report. Of key interest, the school has completed construction of a four thousand square foot modular kindergarten building is operational. They have also included within their two thousand and twenty-two master plan update the summary of their COVID nineteen approaches, which have followed the California Department of Public Health guidelines for this calendar year. They also have noted that there are no new projects, construction projects that they are targeting for this upcoming calendar year. And lastly, they have completed school year traffic counts as is required on their transportation demand management program or TDM plan that the school is required to implement. Just a summary, TDM are different measures that the school implements in attempts to reduce traffic and circulation issues at the campus.
Right.
So the conclusions drawn from their traffic counts do indicate that the daily trip count is thirteen percent below the maximum allowable targeted vehicle trips per day, which is about fifty-two hundred. And as such, it does indicate that the school's TDM mitigations are continuing to be effective in mitigating vehicle traffic. Other than that, as detailed within the staff report, it is found that the two thousand and twenty-two master plan does contain all the required elements of a master plan update, including land use, traffic, et cetera, again, as detailed in the staff report. And as such, staff is recommending that the planning commission accept the master plan update for this year.
All right, great. Let's go, any questions of staff?
I, can I just say one thing? As you guys know, every year I'm on a committee at the school, so I would, if it's okay for me just to sit and listen, and I just won't be part of any vote.
Okay, good. They're, they're very good. Thank you for bringing that up. I remember that for the last time.
Yeah.
All right, very good. So then we'll go ahead and, and open the, open up the public hearing section of this item. And we'll start with the applicant. Michael, is that you?
That is me. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Nice seeing you. Wish I could be there in person, but I'm recovering myself, so.
Oh, wow, okay.
I'm doing well, though.
All right, very good.
So, Anthony, are you able to share screen?
You can, you should be able to share just.
Okay. Is it being shown right now?
Nope, you have to click on the, you have to click, you have to go to your desk, desktop, if you're on your desktop, and click on the item and then share. Click for, click, click on the item first and then share.
Yeah, I did that. This is always a wonky when you do this. So host disabled participant screen sharing.
All right, hold on. That's Anthony, that's you. Okay, try it now, try it one more time.
Okay. All right, there we are.
There we go. You're coming up, Michael.
Now, a lot of times when I put this in presentation, you can't see it on Zoom, so I'm going to try, but if it doesn't work, I'll go back. Do you all still see it?
Yep.
Yes.
Perfect. So first, I would like to thank you for supporting us throughout the years. Our goal is to be a value add for the Atherton community, and the assistance from the town allows us to do this. So thank you very much. Last year, I said this was an unprecedented year, and none of us had a playbook. Well, this was certainly the case this past year as well, and we were successful because of the support from the planning commission, the planning, building and fire departments. Thank you once again for your support. It was no small feat to get the approvals to move forward with our prefab kindergarten building, and it was critical that we get in by August sixteenth. And having broken ground on June first, it was, it was full steam ahead. And you guys are the ones who helped us get there. So thank you. For the two thousand and twenty-one school year, we concentrated efforts on protecting the community, which is something we did the year prior. We started the school year fully open to in-person instruction. For the first semester, we followed the county guidelines, but we added in mask wearing and limited gatherings. Due to pressure from the community, we opened it up a little bit more in the second semester. But that's when it proved that our, our first plan of keeping people separated and masked was probably the best plan because it was keeping everyone healthy, but we did have a spike in some COVID cases. No one was seriously injured, but it was one of those social, not really a social experiment that we wanted to do, but one that we ended up doing. And when you take away masks and people get closer during a pandemic, the incidence of cases increases. The, the godsend, though, was the fact that we had vaccines and it kept people healthier through the pandemic. So as stated earlier, the major project that we undertook was a four thousand square foot prefabricated mass timber classroom building. We netted four classrooms with the restroom in each one, and as I said before, we broke ground on June first. And we gained occupancy on August sixteenth. And trust me, this was no small feat. Everyone in the town was involved and helped out immensely in us getting through this process. It is located behind the speaker pavilion on the interior of the campus. I'm going to show you some photos just for orientation purposes in a few moments, so you can see where it is. The front of the building is oriented towards the lower school campus. So this here is what we call Kinder Walk. We had the, the area between the preschool building and the speaker pavilion gymnasium and put up some posters the kids really love each morning as they walk down this pathway. This is orientation, you can see speaker to the left there, the white building with the gray awning. And right in front of you is the kindergarten building, four thousand square feet, nicely appointed there. Once again, you can see speaker in the, in the background there, and then the left is the Z building. And to the right is the kindergarten building. This is one of the classrooms nicely appointed inside, looks out to the woodsy area. And the teachers, students and parents love these classrooms. I'm moving on to the neighbor relations. They remain strong. I check in with them often. Those that, that make themselves known to us for purposes of keeping informed about certain events. And it has worked out very well. If there's an issue, some noise or some sort of event were in contact directly through phone and email. The TDM, as you heard earlier, were thirteen percent below the cap. This is slightly higher, though, than years past. And the two factors that it appears to me that have caused this is one is the pandemic. The parents don't want to put their children in car pools and public transit. But then we also had a major hit from Caltrane, who goes by the beat of their own drum and did not change any times to coincide with anywhere near school start. And so when you look up the channel and the stops that they have, it's very difficult to predict their next move. And one month into starting school, they then changed the schedule again. We had to send our bus that picks up students at the train station. We had to send them to the Palo Alto Station to pick up our students because it was not stopping in time in Menlo Park. And so that made it very tight for the buses and students to get to campus on time. That also hurt our ridership where we usually have, you know, upwards of sixty kids taking the train. We only had twenty. Enrollment, our enrollment cap is eleven ninety-six. Last year, we projected eleven ninety-six. We started out then with eleven ninety and then ended up with eleven eighty-five due to attrition. This happens every year. We have some students that drop off. We have students that add, but usually it's a net loss during the school year. This coming school year, we are projecting enrollment eleven ninety-six. And I just want to remind the commission that enrollment is not an exact science. You have to spitball it in a way by over offering to get to the target that you hope to achieve by the time the school starts. And so like I said, right now, we're targeting eleven ninety-six. And that is a sweet spot for us budget-wise, so that we can make sure that, that we meet all of our financial burdens during the school year. We offer hang on, I'm sorry. We offer scholarship funds to thirty to thirty-five percent of the students. Some of it is almost a full scholarship for the school year. But most of it is that we ask each family, even if they're going to get a, a scholarship that's very substantial, we ask them to at least participate so that they're more involved, and that allows them to get more involved in the community. Historically, we've had about twenty-five percent of Atherton residents that attend Sacred Heart Schools. That is the same this year. It's, it's, over the past, say, seven years, it's gone from twenty-three percent to twenty-seven percent. And when you think about it, that's fairly significant in that there are nine schools within the Atherton border, and we have twenty-five percent of them. So that means that we're definitely keeping up to our commitment to service the community. And that concludes my presentation. I want to thank you once again for your time and take any questions.
Any questions?
Not for me. Good present.
Yeah, Michael, thank you. Thank you again for doing a great job updating, help you, help your, your, you're getting better and better so you can get back on your motorcycle. And, and thank you again for staying on top of the traffic issues and, and that definitely that is reflected in how the neighbors feel about you also. There are a number of things. How's it, how's the newer, and the new, relatively new gym doing? Is that going okay? I know that we put that, we approved that a few years ago, too.
The practice gym?
Yeah, the practice gym.
Believe it or not, that gym is almost nine years old.
Wow.
It is, it, it's performing well for us. Unfortunately, we have to replace the floor, which we were going to do this summer, but it's almost a half a million dollars.
Wow.
So, yeah, but anyway, like I said, it is, it is working well for us, and it was a good add for the school.
All right, good. All right, with that, then we, we have a, we, we have a, usually have a motion on the end of this, on the end of this one to, to accept the plan. So I'll go ahead and move the, the planning mission, accept the filing of the two thousand and twenty-two annual master plan update and TDM monitoring for the Sacred Heart Schools. Is there a second?
I'll second to him.
All right, moved and seconded, roll call.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Lamb has recused himself. Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael Getwell, and we'll talk to you again soon.
Yeah, Mike.
And.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Thank you. Yes, I, I'm, I'm out of jail as of yesterday, so.
Good, good.
Back on the motorcycle soon.
Good presentation. Thank you.
All right, very good.
Yeah.
All right, next item is item four C, which is a tree protection zone exception for eighty-three Fairview Avenue. And we'll go through the same process, process we're using, and somebody just said, you got to come in towards the beginning of the last item is, is that we go ahead with an overview from staff, then questions from the commission to staff. Then we open up the public hearing and, and, and start with the applicant or their representative. And then for, for anyone else who would like to speak, and then close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. So we'll do that again on this one. With that, then we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Lane. So tonight, the commission is being asked to consider tree protection zone exceptions for five heritage trees at eighty-three Fairview. All five tree protection zone exceptions requested are related to the proposed future construction of a new detached accessory dwelling unit or ADU. What we see here on the screen depicts that all five trees that are noted with a red X are located in the rear half of the lot along or in proximity to the right side property line. Those two green Xs that you see here on the screen are two additional trees that are also requesting TPC exceptions. However, given the specifics of their exception requests are able to be processed at the staff level by the town arborist and do not trigger planning commission review. Again, just the five red Xs that we see here on the screen. So all five of these trees, of these five trees, one is an oak tree, one is an olive tree, and the remaining three are redwood trees. So the requested TPC or tree protection zone exception distances vary between a six times TPC up to a seven point eight times TPC. Whereas a ten times TPC is the otherwise standard requirement per the municipal code. So both the project arborists and the town arborists do concur that all five trees have good tolerance to construction impacts and that the resulting proposed construction intrusions into their root zones will be minimal. No public comment has been received on this application following the public notice mailing to all property owners within five hundred feet at eighty-three Fairview. So given the species tolerances of construction combined with the onsite mitigations as recommended and vetted by both the project arborist and town arborist, the application is found to meet the criteria in order to support the requested TPC exceptions. And as such, staff is recommending approval of the application. So happy to answer any questions, and I do see our town arborist is on the meeting call as well via Zoom.
All right, any questions of staff?
None.
All right, go, well then we'll go ahead and open the public comment section, and we'll hear from the applicant or their representative. I can't see all the, all the people still on the line. I, I guess Sally, you're going to do a stunt double, is that? I don't see anyone else that's ready to speak.
Yes, this is Boyley, the architect.
Okay, there you are. All right, I, I didn't see a picture, but you're, you called in.
Okay, I'll put my picture on. Let's see, how do I do this?
There's a camera that's got an X through it on the top of your screen, or maybe on the bottom, depending on which computer you have. This is stop video. There you go.
There it is.
Yeah.
Oh, a little bit, I have a hat on and all that stuff, so.
All right, good. Well, you're out, you're out in, in, in a nice place.
Oh, no, actually, that's just a background photo I had to prop up, up there.
All right, good.
Thank you, staff, for your time and planning commission. About three or four months ago, the, the clients and the, they asked us to put in a hundred, eleven hundred ninety square foot ADU in this, on this property, and it's a bounded pool, existing residents and addition, and also all the trees. We have to stay away from the pool at at least, I think, eight feet. We have to stay away from the existing residence slash addition another eight feet. So it was a pretty tight spot there. So we're hoping that you approve these TPZ exemptions because of such a tight area. We tried to locate these, this ADU in another location, but it really impacted the entire site in terms of utilities and whatnot. But we just hope for your support on this issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Not for me.
All right, anyone else here to speak on the item? Go ahead, come on, come forward. You, you have to be on the record and introduce yourself and then just.
So one, one thing I've noticed is that the the, the trees will die after the construction is done.
Yeah.
There was a really beautiful tree, probably the most beautiful tree on Palmer Lane, is now dying. The crown is probably fifty percent dead.
Yeah.
A beautiful, beautiful tree. And I watched, I watched as they drove over the roots of that tree during one of the hot summers we had.
Right.
You know, they had a, a netting around it.
Yeah.
And I called up Menlo Park to complain about that. They didn't want to hear my complaints about it. I've also noticed this happens more often than that. There's another street down, there's another house down the street that they had a nice oak right in front.
Right.
And they sought to save it, but son of a gun, a year later, it falls over on the road and it's gone. Okay, so this is really bad. One thing I'd like to see is, can you have a kind of a map how you have construction access? This is relevant to some of these others that they go on here. So for example, these construction people drive over anything.
Yeah.
Okay, and what, what there should be, where possible, there should be a designated route where they take their heavy vehicles and drive into lots so they do not damage the trees.
Right.
I give you an example, right next door, they're doing construction. There's a magnolia that's under stress. They put this big dumpster right into the driveway, then they can't get their, then, then to get their little cat tractor, they have to drive over the roots.
Right.
Then scarred the roots of this magnolia as they went around to the back to do demolition work. So I, I think, I think, one, there ought to be, I don't want to take too much of your time. I think that there ought to be like a map that shows where the designated flow of materials are going to be and how that's going to happen. And then maybe two, there ought to be a penalty if the tree dies, you know, two, two years down the road or something like that.
Yep.
Okay, so that's really my basic comment.
All right, well, thank you, thank you. And we've talked a lot about this also, so we're, we're really in line with the thinking because there's a couple of things like that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, because I didn't see any maps of, of, like, I was looking at some of the other tree protection zones that were requested in the and the construction that's going to go on, and I didn't see any maps on showing how they're going to get the material in there without, without doing it. And let, let me say one thing, you know, contractors, they, you can tell them and they don't necessarily do what they're supposed to do. For example, next door also, there's a sign, I noticed there was a sign out there, they put up the other day. It says, no working on holidays and after five PM. Well, guess what? They were working all, all Monday on, on a federal holiday, and they were out there today again. So, you know, just because we say it and there's a sign there, doesn't mean people are going to obey.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I can speak on some of his points if you want me to.
Let's wait until we close the public, public hearing section, Sally. All right, any other, any other comments on this item? I'm not seeing anybody. Kim, you're here. No one else? Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment section. And Sally, you want to speak to some of the points there?
So Atherton didn't, the federal holiday wasn't for Atherton on Monday. And we were, construction crews were allowed to work on Monday.
Okay.
As for the, we do require a construction operations plan when they submit a building, which basically includes where they're allowed to park, where the trash trailer, where the trash goes, where the trailer goes, where the porta potty goes. So they do have to submit that. Sometimes I do ask for the access route, if it's just for like an ADU, if it's a, if it's a full site, then they can pretty much go anywhere where there's no tree protection fencing. So in this case, I can ask for how they're going to access the location. They will have to fence all of the trees on the plan. And yeah, I think that's all I have for that.
All right, thanks. Any questions of staff?
No.
All right, good, then I'll bring you back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. You know, I went out to the site and I was, I was looking at, I wasn't doing my email, I was looking at the, you know, the pictures I took of the site. And I think coming up with a, you know, the, just making sure that we're protecting the trees because I know in my own personal situation with a neighbor next door, they, the trucks were driving over, and I could hear the roots cracking. And we, and I contacted Sally and she, Sally came out and there was, there was action taken. So it's, it's a sensitive issue that we've all been talking about. One of the things that we've done in terms of the tree protection reviews that we're doing is to make sure the trees don't get to be a one year after the construction tree. So definitely the points you brought up are very relevant to the conversations we've had here as well as how to go about doing it, because the enforcement part of it is a trigger by a neighbor who says, hey, wait a minute, to the, to the town, it, it needs to be fixed. And in my experience, when, when the town is called, it gets fixed. And in my experience, when, when the town is called, it gets fixed very quickly because the enforcement officers, well, Sally are on the case. Uh, but I, I, I didn't see a problem with this one and, uh, it's a, it's sixty-one trees on the site that, that are worth mentioning, not all, not, not, uh, in addition to a lot of them that aren't even big enough to be.
I'm glad this has been brought up because it's an important topic and it's often overlooked, so thank you for coming in.
Right. All right, any other comments?
I, I'm fine with it. What's, two things, I'm happy to make the motion, but I just am wondering how long it took you to count six.
Oh, I, I didn't count them, that was in the report.
I thought you were walking around there with a clipboard counting all of them just to make sure.
I, I, I looked at about ten trees that I, on the list, and I assumed that the other forty, forty-one were correct.
There you go. All right, thank you for confirming. I'm happy to make a motion unless someone else wants to.
You go ahead, ready?
All right, and move the planning commission find the exception to the tree, tree protection zone TPZ for five heritage trees, tree number twenty-seven to seven point eight times. The tree diameter, tree twenty-eight to six point nine times, tree thirty to six times, tree thirty-one to seven point one times, and tree thirty-nine to seven times. To allow for construction of a proposed detached accessory dwelling unit ADU at eighty-three Fairview Avenue would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan. For the reasons outlined in the staff report and that the commission approved the TPZ exception subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPZ exception permit.
Boy, you did a great job on that. You have a second?
Second.
Uh, move to the second, uh, roll call, please.
Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nornsek?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, go, make sure that those trees survive, okay?
Will do.
All right, very good, thank you. And Sally, uh, just, uh, just, uh, that, uh, stay on the case, all right?
I will.
All right, I know you do, I know you will. All right, thank you. Uh, next item, uh, item four D is another tree protection zone exception at fifty-seven Holbrook Lane. Uh, in Atherton, and we'll go through the same process here, we'll start with the, uh, staff overview and, uh, then we'll open up there for public comment. All right.
Thank you, Chair Lane. Um, so again, the commission's being asked to consider a TPC exception this time for three oak trees at fifty-seven Holbrook Lane. Uh, this would be to accommodate a proposed first story addition, hatched garage and a slightly reconfigured existing driveway. So all three of these oak trees, uh, are shown here on the screen, um, by number, number four, number five, number six in red font. Um, they are all located in the rear right of the lot, close to the shared neighbors property line. The requested TPC exception distances vary down to one point eight times TPZ up to seven times the TPZ. Whereas a ten times TPZ is otherwise required by the municipal code. Um, it is noted that both the existing garage and existing driveway do currently encroach within the required tree protection zones. Uh, however, it is noted that the new driveway will be reconstructed of a permeable paver, unlike it is now under its existing conditions. As well as the construction types of the garage and addition will, um, be done so to, in an attempt to minimize root cutting. So the town arborist has reviewed the application and does find, uh, the ability to support all three of the requested TPC exceptions. Due to the conditions of the tree specific to the proposed construct, construction methods. Of the improvements as well as being combined with the specific mitigations to be conducted by the project arborist onsite during construction. Um, and as such, is recommending approval of the application. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Not for me.
Never, I've never seen a one point eight X. Yeah, this is the, this is the site, if you haven't seen the site. It's, uh, um. It's already, it's already, the driveway is already there. The difference, as, as, as pointed out, the difference would be that, uh, uh, the, the surface over the tree privilege would be different. Uh, let's go ahead and open up public comment and, uh, go ahead and start with the applicant. It's the applicant or the representative here?
Yeah, that's me, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Michael Smith, I'm the applicant homeowner. Um, I don't want to take a lot of your time, uh, most of what I wanted to say I've included in the narrative cover, cover letter that I submitted with the application. But there are a few points, um, I think briefly hi- highlight. Uh, a little background, um, the TPZ request is to allow for, it's, it's a step in hoping to, um, achieve a long overdue. Uh, remodel and addition of our current home. Uh, the, the ultimate goal is a, a modest expansion of the house, the current house, which is one thousand three hundred square feet. Um, adding a bit up to, to make it two thousand two hundred square feet and then to demolish and relocate the garage. Um, so that's just for some context, we, we're not, not trying to build the Taj Mahal here. Um, and for what it's worth, it's my childhood home and I, I generally want to protect these trees, um, as well. They hold some real sentimental value for me. Uh, that said, as, back to the trees, there's nine heritage trees on the property, but only these three at issue. There are trees four, five and six, as they're referred to in the application, all coast live oaks. And a tree, tree number four, this one involves the greatest encroachment, it's down to one point eight X. Um, and which is admittedly pretty close. Um, but this encroachment will, the, the, almost the entirety of that encroachment will consist of the, the above grade permeable paver driveway as it passes by. Tree four to access the garage in the back. Um, permeable pavers were chosen to minimize the impact, allow water intrusion into the root zone. And also the plan is to use, um, minimally invasive compressed air excavation, which I didn't know was a thing, but it's been, um, I've since learned about it. And, and that's done during construction to identify the, the tree's roots, protect those roots and establish, um, the grade. So to avoid cutting them and then on top of that, an above grade design to further minimize impact on the roots. So basically the driveway would have a slight rise through the TPZ area of, of tree number four. Um, and lastly, the reality is the, given the narrowness of the lot, um, some degree of driveway encroachment is, is unavoidable in order to pass along that side of the house. Um, but I think our approach will work well. Um, as for the other two trees, five and six, they're located near the proposed new garage. Um, we're seeking, uh, keep, we're seeking TPZ exceptions, uh, down to four point seven X and seven point zero X respectively. Um, here again, we opted for a more tree friendly construction approach, specifically, um, an alternative pier and grade beam foundation design. In order to minimize the excavation necessary, um, and reduce the impacts on tree number five, uh, and six. And also it should be noted that most of the increased encroachment, um, to tree number five is that section of new permeable paper driveway leading up to the garage. Um, and our consulting arborist, arborist is on board and the, seemingly the town arborist both seem to be on board with this approach. Uh, lastly, um, to help put things in perspective, it's worth pointing out that our lot is, uh, long and skinny. It's two hundred twenty-five feet long, but only, um, sixty-four and a half feet wide. Um, and, and the fact is lots of, of such narrow width are more typical of Atherton's R one B zoning district, which, uh, which uses a much less restrictive. Six X baseline TPZ, um, as opposed to the ten X as in the R one A district. The rationale behind that more generous baseline, it's really just a practical concession to the natural constraints of those lot sizes and dimensions. And, and we think that this same rationale should apply here, uh, not, not through strict operation of the ordinance, but through the considered discretion of planning commission. Um, so in the end, uh, the spacing, location and the size of the trees, the applicable set packs, they all presented some significant building and design, uh, challenges. But I think our proposed plans and the recommended mitigation measures will allow for reasonable use of the property. Um, it will allow our house to grow with our growing family and it will still, and will, uh, adequately protect the health of our trees. Um, I hope you agree, that's all I've got, uh, unless you have any questions for me, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? I see a couple of people that, all right, Anthony, I sent you an email, uh, with the picture, uh, some pictures that I took. Can you pull, can you pull those up so I can, uh, one of them, I just sent it to your email here. I took some picture, I think, so, uh, no one else, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Did he have?
Oh, oh, yeah, I didn't see, all right, go ahead.
Foot radius.
Yes.
Of whatever, um, a- and you know, what, what I noticed about this plan is that there's a tendency for all the material to flow right over those tree roots.
Yes.
Okay, and that was my concern and we, we've had a lot of subdivisions in my area, mostly, uh, nearly all in unincorporated Menlo Park. And they put up these huge, uh, huge houses and they cut down the trees and then the trees die too, uh, the, the, some of the existing ones. Is there, is there a plan to mitigate, you know, you have those beautiful trees, I don't have any problem with your encroachment zone. But I, I would like, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that there's some way you can ensure that your trees, uh, uh, stay around. It looks like most of the material flow will come right across your big live oak there. And maybe there's something you've thought about that I can't see in your planner, whatever, but maybe you, maybe you've thought about some way to mitigate, uh, the influence of the construction traffic on that. That's really my comment.
Great, thank you, thank, thank you for that, bringing that up again. Um, I go, and so what, what's on the screen right now, um, is a picture I took when I visited the site. Um, and, and so it's, it's, it's clear that, you know, that, that there is driving over it right now. The difference will be the, the weight of the vehicles that, uh, that go over it, so, um, it's, it's, uh, it's going to be, it's going to be important that that is understood and take, and, and taken into consideration when, um, when this is looked at. Now, the, the, uh, the, the rear garage is there already and so they, and they, when you see the plan, the, the, the back third of the house is where they, where the additionally put in. Um, so it's, it's just one of those things, Sally, you're gonna, you're, you, you have to be, you know, pretty, pretty, uh, involved with this one, probably just to make sure things work, okay? Not only, and I know, and I live on Encina, which I, so I'm in the Fair Oaks area also, I have about three blocks away from this. And, uh, it is, i- i- if you go to the unincorporated mental park, they're just mowing things down and, and putting up boxes. Uh, and, and it's important that, you know, for the, for the nature of the, of the neighborhood to keep the green effect. And also using, it, it helps neighbors not looking right into each other's, uh, uh, windows all of a sudden, you know, it's, that's what's happening over in West, uh, uh, Menlo Park area. Uh, which the unincorporated surrounding this area, so I just want to make sure that, uh, this is a lower, lower, uh, uh, radius, uh, separation that we normally would approve. But it is, look, it looks to me like it is something these trees have tolerated really well. And it's just important that, uh, whatever construction goes in there, you know, Sally, is, is there going to be a cement truck going through there or not?
Um, well, uh, we can ask the applicant, but typically they keep their current driveway for the heavy construction because it's already.
The, the, uh, the, uh.
Garage foundation?
The foundation for the.
Well, I think they'll keep the current driveway and then when they're done with the garage in the back, then that's when they will start the, the new driveway.
That would make sense, or, or, um, if they don't have ways to, um, pump the concrete back, you know, without, without remotely, I don't know. But it's a good point.
Take it.
I've got the audio cutting in and out, are you?
Yeah, I can't hear anybody.
Can't hear any.
I'll, I'll send a chat.
I can hear.
Okay, you can hear.
All right, I, I, what I'm concerned about is understanding what kind of foundation the new garage will have.
Ah, is that a question for me?
Yes.
It's a little bit outside my specialty, but, um, uh, I did, I'd see the plans, it's, it's basically a series of piers along the perimeter edge of the garage. As opposed to a, you know, a, uh, concrete, like a stem wall going straight down. It's instead point, um, point intrusions that then hold up a, uh, a grade beam and that, that being the, the, essentially the floor of the garage itself at grade. So you're only, you have these few select point intrusions holding up the, the grade beam thereby minimizing the effect of, uh, the, the need to, um, impact the roots of any trees here.
What's the floor of the garage going to be?
Concrete.
Okay, so my question is, how is a concrete going to get in there without hurting the trees?
Okay, yeah. Ha, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but I'm, you know, I'm happy to, uh, adhere to any, um, any, you know, best practices or a, or any technique that might be, um, required. But, and I, and I don't know what that'd be, if, 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 if it required just doing the garage first and we drive along the existing, the existing driveway, um, you know, so be it.
So yes.
The issue is not going to be the existing driveway or, or new driveway, the issue is going to be the amount of weight that's going to be on that area compared to normal. So when you're driving your cars up in there, you got, maybe, you know, SUV, you might have five thousand pounds, a cement truck, you're going to have, what, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand?
Fifty, sixty thousand. Yeah, then here, look at, like, we could, we could make it as a condition if anybody wants to, that, if the applicant's okay with it, that it would be, I mean, this is Steph's call, but.
Yeah, yeah, you're.
From the street, it's easy to pump it from the street.
Right, I'm, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear that last bit, his audio was cutting out, what was the proposed condition?
We can make it, we can make it, we could look at a condition on the, on the approval to make sure that the cement truck doesn't go over the trees roots.
Yeah, you just pump it from the street. If you pump it from the street, it's easy, that people do it all the time, they have those long bib, the long booms that do it.
Right. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and clo- uh, close the public hearing again, so bring you back, question for discussion and action. So, yeah, Sally, uh, this is not, this, this is not specifically in your area of, of trees, but it's in the tree protection area. So how do we go about making, uh, making this so it works for the protection, or Stephanie might have some ideas on this?
Uh, through the chair, as a recommendation, if I'm hearing, um, the commission's discussion correctly. We could add, you could add a, an additional condition of approval to the tree protections and exception certificate. That speaks specifically to the construction operation plan that the town arborist made reference to previously. And that it have required, uh, content within it specifically that any concrete trucks associated with any future building permit be limited to parking in front of the house. And any such concrete to be pumped, um, be done so without the vehicle, um, uh, driving or staging itself within or on, uh, trees.
Or not even on the site, I wouldn't even have it on the site, I'd just say, hey, anything that has to happen, happens from the street, especially on sixty-four foot width. I mean, that, that, you'd have to do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they're able to pump at that distance?
Oh, yeah, they can, hundreds, hundreds of feet if they need to.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the important thing is, we're, 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 then, the, 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 this, this area, for this to work. There can't be huge amount of weight put on that section of the, of the area.
Understanding.
Uh, so that's, that's what we're talking about, so, but, you'll want it to work that way and so will we, so.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go ahead and then ask for a motion, uh. Everybody want to make that motion?
Why, like?
All right, go ahead.
I'll do this one, okay, I moved that the planning commission find the exception to the tree protection zone for three heritage trees, tree number four to one point eight times. The tree's diameter, tree number five to four point seven times, and tree number six to seven times for a proposed addition to the main residence driveway. And new garage at fifty-seven Holbrook Lane would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report. And that the commission approve the TPC exception subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPC exception permit. In addition, the, uh, conditions should include the following, which is that, uh, any concrete to be used on site during construction shall be pumped from the street.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? We're just go, go to a vocal, vocal.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Nornsek.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, uh, I think, I think that'll work. It's just, it's important, it's important that the, the particularly on the, the impact on that lot that those trees survive. Thank you very much. Good luck with it and, uh, and we're looking forward to it. And now, uh, my wife and I'll be walking by regularly, just on a regular walk. I'll stop by and wave.
Good presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Good presentation.
Very good. All right, thank you. That, that's all we have on, on, on that, on the, uh, items four. So the staff reports on item five. You know, uh, uh, my, my joke has been, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, I'll be here for a lack of a second, you know? So, so I'll be back, I'll be back.
Good. We're, we're, we're excited. I may, we, we, maybe we have a quorum, but maybe we could, we could, could we do like a four year vote? That you, you're, you take over the chair job for all four years rather than just one at a time?
No, we'll do it one year at a time because I have to live year to year.
Well, we'd replace you anyway. We might bring you like, yeah, what was that, uh, Brad? What was the guy that they drove around all the vacation with, whoever he was? We, we just have you come up.
All right, any other staff reports?
I actually have a question after Steph goes.
I'm just going to, uh, make the announcement that the planning commission will be holding a special planning commission meeting tomorrow, uh, June twenty third at one PM, only over Zoom. It will not be hybrid. Uh, and the special meeting is focused on the town's proposed draft housing element. And the intent of the meeting tomorrow is just to present a brief overview of the housing element, uh, but more importantly to take public comment. Um, as the town is within the required thirty day public review period of the, uh, first round draft housing element.
Right. Thank you. And if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, you know I have the agenda already.
And for anybody who, who's watching, um, the link to the tomorrow's planning commission special agenda that does include the Zoom meeting details is on the town's website.
Yeah, so one o'clock tomorrow is, it's a different time than normal, but it's a time that everybody could get together with, uh, with the, uh, with the staff and, and the, the commission for an extra meeting this month. Uh, and, uh, so then that, that'll be an interesting meeting because it'll, it'll be, it's, it's a meeting in, in a series of meetings that we're going to have. So it's not the last meeting. As a matter of fact, there's no, there's no, uh, action that we take tomorrow. It's an update meeting for us and it's also an opportunity for whomever wants to come to speak to the item about the, about the plan. So that we, so we're continuing the open dialogue. No action item. It's just a matter of, of getting an update from staff, listening to people on their ideas on how to make this, this work and, uh, and, uh, and to make sure that the public comment aspect of this keeps continuing uh, during the whole process. As a matter of fact, I've asked staff to provide me, and I think I saw that, uh, uh, an email that um, I've asked, uh, staff to highlight all the communication that's gone on so far and an overview of it because there, so it's been concerned that some people didn't know and we're definitely, we're definitely, uh, having an ongoing discussion on this, um, uh, all along.
And can I add something? So, so, uh, one, with this many P, I mean, I, they, I'm on a nu- a number of the email chains in town through a variety of different friend groups, et cetera. Uh, there's hundreds of emails going around on this. There's one from Jeff Morris and, and Courtney Charney and others. It's, that's already a hundred and fifty to two hundred, yeah, emails. Uh, 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 folks that are on it and my guess is theirs is going out either. I, I only budgeted two hours for this and I, I have a hard stop at three o'clock. So I'd love to stay along and listen in as much as I can, but I d- I don't have that luxury tomorrow. Secondly, um, I just think maybe rather than having everybody get up and say the exact same thing, maybe there's a way that we can
Yes.
not limit people's time, but just say, look at, put your hand up.
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a three. We'll have a three minute, uh, time limit and then with the idea that people can go ahead and write, write to us and it'll be part of the record.
Okay, great.
And also with the idea that, uh, uh, we're gonna, uh, have the, uh, uh, try to get as many people to comment as possible, but also to remind people that if they agree to somebody, say you agree, but then go on to a new point. The objective of this is, um, I mean, uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of concern over this and there, and I'm going to say this tomorrow. There's there's no one I know on the planning commission or the town council that asked for this, that to be direct, would have directed us to do what we're, we're being told to do. So the, so they have two choices. Either we come up with a plan that the state can accept or they, they, they cut, they appoint somebody to do it for us and that won't be a friendly, uh, answer. So we've got to come up with a way to, to, to comply, but not ruin the community in the process. And that'll be our objective. Where we, we're going to be, uh, looking for solutions that'll work. Uh, while we, we'll also hear the passion around the issue, uh, but we understand that very thoroughly. I think there's it's, it's not going to be a matter of convincing us that this is, this is, uh, uh, something that's radically, uh, different for the community. It's a, it's a function of how do we comply without having the authority for running the town taken away from us. So that's kind of, I'll be.
Yeah, can I say, yeah, can I say something? So as a home builder, I would tell you, you, you're, you're, you and Steph are going to have the main role tomorrow, which in my opinion, and, and Nancy and Perry can, can weigh in too, but I think what it's going to be, most people don't under, even understand the acronym for RENA and they don't understand the, the, the level of, 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 um, discussion going around the state and that really this started with the governor and that our governor is really, their, their senate bills, there's all sorts of stuff that people are doing relative to zoning. And I think it's really important that we let, you know, set the table for that because there's a lot of emotion going on around town. And I just think however you two decide to set that ahead, I, I, I can't speak for the others, but I'll support you on it, but I, something similar to what you just said, I think would be really appropriate. So I understand.
I'll be doing that and Lisa will, will be doing.
Whomever, yeah.
Yeah, Lisa will be doing the presentation tomorrow and she and I have talked about making sure that we, we, one of the things that's going on here is that the context for why is not fully established. Uh, and the context for why is because we are told to by state or a mandate. Uh, and, and in my opinion, it's, it's a mandate of bad planning, uh, so that we have to, but we don't, if we don't comply, then we're going to get terrible planning. So we have to come up with a way to, to balance the, the, uh, the targets that are, that we were, uh, given with a, providing Atherton a community that, at the, uh, that citizens want. Uh, and so we'll be, we'll be talking about that and Lisa's has a good framework for that as well as making sure that people understand they'll have multiple times to communicate and multiple ways to communicate directly.
Yeah, and I, I think it's that this is not something that we're coming up, I mean, the emails I've seen just to everybody is that it's a um, hey, the, this, the town council's to blame for this. We, we have to set the table on education first and then start the rest.
Right, absolutely. We'll be doing that as much as we can, but as you know.
I'm just giving my view on it.
No, no, it's, uh, it's, a- as you know, it's, it's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation out there, which is kind of the standard of, of of the world right now. Um, and we'll, we'll just have to do everything we can to lay it out and then frankly, people have to, have to, uh, be willing to listen to what they're, what the facts really are, which is this is not us waking up and say, hey, why don't we, why don't we just change the whole way we do the community? It's not that at all. It's, it's that, uh, the the, uh, the legislature has come up with a concept that, uh, many communities are not comfortable with. And so the beginning of the process is to, to get in compliance that, that as it goes on, the more and more communities are going to question exactly uh, does this work and how does it change and how is it implemented in a way that doesn't, doesn't radically change communities away from what they wanted to be? So it's a, it's, there's a lot of work ahead and, uh, and, uh, I was, I was kind of hoping that somebody would come forward and apply for the planning commission. So I would, I wouldn't be here to, to do this meeting, but it's a, it's, it's definitely something. It, it's important that we do our jobs because we have the history of understanding where the, where things have gone in the community over time. And it's important that people understand that, that, uh, we're interested in keeping, uh, the, the, the tone and the style of Atherton the, uh, a- alive and well and also comply so that somebody doesn't come here and just say, by the way, this half of town is R fifty.
Right, right.
All right, with that then, uh, uh, that, no, I was doing, I was doing commissioner reports during staff reports, sorry.
I know, we were, we were wondering, man, you're out for two tonight, man.
I know, I know, I know. Those sliders, they throw me off. All right, any, any other staff information?
No.
All right, good. Well, thank you for, for jumping in like commissioners.
I've moved it.
All right, we have to move.
I, I, can I just make a, a, we stop, like, close the meeting.
We have a move to, we have a move to close the meeting and we'll see you tomorrow at one o'clock. Do you have a second?
Second.
Third.
All right, it's your second. All right, uh, roll call.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Nornsek.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a feeling we'll earn our money tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wear, wear your hard hat.
Yeah, I will.
We definitely have to.